To begin the meeting, I would call this Celine City Council Work Meeting to order at 6:08 PM. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, council members CO, Dylan, Nirboh, and Valen Mitchell. At the airport, Tema Tahar. From the city staff, we have City Manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, Treasurer Bennett, DPW Director Ford, City Engineer Superintendent Rubel, and Chief Legal Counsel Scott Smith. We have some other interested parties in the audience this evening, in particular to my left. We welcome you here this evening, and I think there will be an opportunity for you to introduce yourself and maybe talk a little bit about some matters that you feel passionate about. But we appreciate you taking the time of your service to join us.
Thank you.
At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as distributed unless there are amendments.
So moved?
As distributed?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mitchell. It was properly moved by Councilwoman Dylan, seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell, to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And both say nay. Aye's app, the motion carries unanimously. We come to public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make counter-questions to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but now required to state his or her name and address for the record. There are any citizens comments. There are no citizens comments, and we'll proceed to the discussion portion of our agenda. We have two issues. The first will probably occupy most of the work meeting this evening, and that is 425 agreements and the process by which parcels can be annexed into the city. We're going to speak to this issue broadly, and then focus more specifically on a request and some interested parties who have some parcels that, in a perfect world, they would like to see brought into the city in order to access utilities. So I think I'm going to -- do you want me to turn it over to you first? You can hand it right over to Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith is going to go over the process by which parcels can be annexed using 425 agreements, which is actually, I believe, enumerated in state law. At the conclusion of his remarks, I also want Mr. Campbell to touch briefly on the automatic annexation process, because we have some parcels in the area that fall under that category. We also have some interested parties who may be approaching the Council in the very near future to bring those into the city under some different terms and agreements. So with that, unless there are questions for me, Mr. Smith, the floor is yours, please. Be sure to speak into the microphone, and then go to my colleagues on Council as well. Thank you.
So you have a draft agreement pursuant to 1984 PA 425 that provides for the conditional transfer of property from Celine Township to the city. But before looking at that, I thought it would be helpful, especially for newer council members, to explain the various processes for transferring the jurisdiction of property from one municipal entity to another. So basically, there are two processes to do that. One's called annexation, and one's called the conditional transfer of property. There are also processes for the consolidation of jurisdictions and for detachment, but I won't get into those, because we're only looking at those situations where we're adding property from one jurisdiction to another, not where we're consolidating two governmental units. Annexation can be accomplished, depending on the circumstances, in several ways, including, for example, city-owned property that is adjacent to city boundaries, is vacant and unoccupied, may be annexed by resolution of the city's governing body. So if the city were to buy property adjacent to its boundaries, it's vacant and unoccupied, you could annex it with a simple resolution. Now, you have to understand that a recent court case, as of May 9, 2017, involving the city of Three Rivers, says that if there's a utility main on that property, it's not vacant. So it really has to be unused for anything. A second way, property adjacent to the city that's either owned by the city or consists of fractional parts of planted subdivision lots, may be annexed by approval of the city's and township's governing bodies. If property is adjacent to the city, and the only qualified electors on it are the petitioners who own one half or more of the area to be annexed, the property can be annexed by resolution of the city and the township. The township has to have notice in a public hearing. The city can petition the State Boundary Commission for annexation of property adjacent to the city. The owners of 75% or more of the area of land proposed for annexation can petition the State Boundary Commission. 20% or more of registered electors residing in an area proposed for annexation can petition the State Boundary Commission. In all situations, that property has to be adjacent to the current city limits. Petitions to the State Boundary Commission take kind of a peculiar process. The first thing the Boundary Commission does is determine the sufficiency of the petition. And normally, that focuses on where the commas are in the legal description. So oftentimes, the petitions are kicked out for technical inaccuracies in the legal description, or that legal description has to be revised. So the Boundary Commission has an initial review of the petition, sets a hearing on the sufficiency of the petition, determines the sufficiency of the petition, then sets a hearing on the petition itself. And the hearing on the petition itself is held in one of the two governmental units that are affected by the annexation. And then it meets to hear proposed findings and a decision, and then there's finalization of the findings and the decision. So a Boundary Commission annexation process can take a year and a half to two years. And that's assuming nothing goes wrong along the way, so that you have to start all over. Then, after the Boundary Commission decides the issue, there's the possibility that somebody who's affected by the annexation can petition for a referendum. So after dealing with this a lot, and dealing with situations where townships and cities were saying, geez, if we could only agree, if we could share some of the tax revenue, if we could do some other things, there might be a way to do this by agreement. So in 1984, the legislature adopted Act 425. And Act 425 allows the city and township, in most cases, it's a city and township, but in some cases, it's two townships, or a village and a township, or a village and a city, to agree on the terms and conditions of a transfer of the jurisdiction from the township to the city. Act 425 allows those contracts, they can be up to 50 years in term, with up to a 50-year renewal. It must be for an economic development project, and that can include industrial, commercial, or residential development. It must address revenue sharing, sharing of taxes and other revenues that the jurisdictions get. It must address methods for enforcing the agreement. It must address the jurisdiction of the property upon the expiration or termination of the agreement. And it may address other things. It may address an early termination or rescission. It may address any resulting transfers of local government personnel. It may address ordinance applicability and enforcement. It may address rates, fees, and charges in taxing jurisdictions. It may address gifts, grants, loans, and it may address municipal liability. Act 425 allows you to have the property in one jurisdiction for some purposes, and in another jurisdiction for other purposes. It does not require adjacency. So I participated or helped draft an Act 425 agreement involving property in the city of Walker, which is not a core community, transferring that property from Walker's jurisdiction to Wyoming's jurisdiction, even though they don't share a border. And Wyoming, the closest Wyoming boundary is probably five or six miles away from that Walker property. But it's because Walker wasn't a core community, Wyoming is a core community, Wyoming could offer some brownfield benefits that Walker can't. And so the jurisdiction was transferred for purposes of taxation and the application of the Brownfield Act, and for all other purposes, remained in the city of Walker. As an extreme example of what can be done with some creativity. It requires the approval of both governing bodies. It does not require the property owner's approval, although it'd be kind of foolhardy to do it if the property owner didn't want it to occur. You need a public hearing, and you need to wait for 30 days after the public hearing before the agreement can take effect, because there's a 30-day referendum period. And a referendum can occur on the agreement either if one of the governing bodies wants to have a referendum, or if a petition is signed by 20% or more of the registered electors residing within the affected property, or if there are no registered electors, a petition can be filed by those owning 50% or more of the property to be transferred. So it's possible to have a referendum on a 425 agreement. I've never seen one. Normally, the transfer is to gain municipal services, most of the time water and sewer services, although I've seen them to gain the availability of other services, such as the availability of brownfield benefits of a core community. I've seen them to provide for city police and fire services. I've seen them for other purposes. In this case, the township, we are told, is in support of the agreement. In fact, we've had discussions with township officials, and they're supportive of the agreement. The township attorney has read every draft of the agreement, and actually, some of his comments and changes have been incorporated in this draft. Now, are there any questions so far? I'll go through the draft agreement point by point. That's kind of a quick summary of annexation.
Very quick, but very thorough.
Understand that, you know, I've done courses for other municipal attorneys on this, and you can spend two, three hours talking about the intricacies of annexation and 425 agreements.
Let's -- I appreciate that, Mr. Smith. Let's stick to the, I guess, the complexities of annexation as it's defined by the state of Michigan. And so I'm going to work my way around the table here. I usually start to my right, I'll start to my left, begin with Mr. CO and with Ms. Tahar. If you have questions about the process in which a parcel can be annexed and transferred from one municipality to another, I'm sure Mr. Smith would be delighted to address your questions or concerns. So begin with you, Mr. CO.
No questions at this time.
None.
No, I'll pass.
I have no questions at this time.
I don't think I do either. Thanks.
Well, is enough. Why don't you continue, though, Mr. Smith?
Maybe that's because it's like a barn project.
Yes.
Just befuddling and complexity. Well, let's walk through the draft agreement, then. As I indicated, you'll see in the introductory paragraph that we've made Celine Ventures a party to the agreement. That doesn't have to be the case, but oftentimes, in a 425 agreement, we include provisions that we want to be binding on the developer and owner of the property, and the only way to do that is to make them parties to the agreement. And this is one of those agreements where we've got provisions, we want the owners to walk in with eyes wide open as to the terms and conditions of it. The recitals are kind of normal recitals you see in a 425 agreement. They set out what we're trying to do, what kind of land is involved, define what the economic development project is, and define some of the other terms. If you go to page two, starting at section 1.3, 1.3B, we indicate that the project is an economic development project as defined in Act 425, because that's a condition for entering into an Act 425 agreement. Paragraph D, there are factors that 425 says you need to consider when you enter into an agreement, and those factors are recited there. Paragraph E, we have to have a public hearing. Sometimes, the parties hold that public hearing jointly, and the Township Board and City Council will meet together to hold that public hearing. And you'll see, then, in paragraph G, that we set it up assuming there's not going to be a referendum. Section 1.4, it's important, in my view, to clarify that the township's not relying on this property for any particular revenue, that there aren't special assessments, that the township doesn't have tax increments that it's hoping to get from this, and it's not relying on that particularly for any debt the township might have. We have to get into the effect of the transfer, so you'll see on page three that we do that. The property, for all purposes, will be within the jurisdiction of the city. This isn't like some where it's transferred for some purposes, and the township still retains jurisdiction. For all purposes, it will be in the city's jurisdiction. And then we deal specifically with some of those purposes. So we've provided, for instance, for city zoning, but if the city zoning actions won't permit the project, then the property will revert to the township's jurisdiction, because we frustrated the whole purpose of the Act 425 agreement. There'll be no economic development project, and so the property ought to revert to the township. Government services, the city would provide all government services. It provides other property in the city except city water and sewer services. City ordinances will apply, and for water and sewer services, if you look at paragraph D, the city undertook some engineering studies, and if you'll recall, we had some discussion about this. It was $3.6 million for the lines, too, and facilities needed just to serve this property. And if we figured in that this property, if combined with the other areas that could be annexed to the city, and the other undeveloped areas in the city, if those were all developed, we would need to expand our water and sewer plant, and that expansion would cost about $7.9 million. And we figured about 22% of that could be allocated to this development. Again, these are just rough-cut, general numbers. So the total cost, potentially, of serving this property would be about $5.1 million. And that, the property owner has determined, probably reasonably, is a tad much to add to the price of lots to make them saleable in a competitive real estate market. Nobody's going to buy a lot for several hundred thousand dollars, because that's what it costs to get water and sewer service to it. So we have, in sub-paragraph three, allowed, if you accept this agreement, it would allow the use of the River Ridge utilities, the River Ridge water system, the River Ridge sewer system. We recognize that clearly deviates from the city's past practices. It leaves you with a policy decision, because this project only works if we undertake that kind of approach. It's not going to work if they have to connect to city water and sewer services. We can't afford to extend it to them, and they can't afford to pay the cost of extending it to them. However, in paragraph four, we build in a lot of caveats and a lot of controls over this. So we've conditioned the approval of the use of the River Ridge utilities on all of these sub-points, the Roman numerals, the small Roman numerals. Neither the township nor the city shall assume any responsibility or liability for those utilities. Celine Ventures will be responsible without expense to the city or township to obtain all permits for it. The city's got no permitting responsibility, and the developer is responsible for all other approvals. The infrastructure developed within the subdivision, the water lines, sewer lines, and so forth put in within the subdivision, all have to meet city standards. The city has no obligation for those utilities, and the developer must inform the DEQ of that provision. And we've reiterated that neither the city nor the township shall be responsible for, subject to the remedies or penalties for any unauthorized discharge from the sewer system, and made a reference to the state law in that regard. In paragraph five, we've indicated that any future connection to the city, if they would ever desire that in the future, the owners of those lots would have to pay the full cost of that. We don't extend it otherwise. And nothing in the agreement, in paragraph six, obligates the city to serve those properties with water and sewer service. You'll see in paragraph E that for tax purposes, it's within the city, and we recited all of the different tax purposes, except that, assuming this gets approved this year, the township would continue to collect 2017 taxes. Special assessments, it'll be within the city limits, and for all rates, fees, and charges, and it's in the city limits, and those residing on the property will vote in the city. Sharing of state shared revenues, grants, and other sources of income all come to the city. The term and termination, it's about 15 years, terminating at the end of December 2033. And that's because I find it better either to have agreements terminate at the end of a fiscal year, or to terminate at the end of a calendar year, because it's simply easier to calculate the effect of that. Normally, when we're looking at property taxes and other ramifications, the end of a calendar year is the better way to do it. The jurisdiction on termination would be with the city. And then there's a possibility of early termination if Celine Ventures fails to get the needed approvals by certain dates. And then it returns to the township if it fails to get the approvals or undertake the The remedies provision in section 4.3 does what I include in a lot of agreements, and that is, it requires the parties to communicate and meet before any lawsuit or other dispute resolution mechanism is used. I can answer any questions about the agreement.
Again, or again, should be able to start to my left, Mr. CO and end with Ms. Tahar. I do want to note, because I failed to acknowledge this at the beginning of our work meeting this evening, because these issues are multi-dimensional and very complex, and the Andalina proposal, the Andalina Farms proposal, some of you are seeing this and digesting it for the first time. I am not looking for consensus this evening. It would be inappropriate. This will be a discussion item at our next council meeting, our first meeting in August. But I do want to give everyone ample time to address any questions and concerns that they may have. So with that, Mr. CO, the floor is yours.
Several questions, please, Mr. Smith. First of all, you said the taxes will be paid to the township through the end of this calendar year.
Yes.
And thereafter, all taxes would come to the city?
Right.
Okay. The assessments on these homes, once they come into the -- well, once they come into the jurisdiction of the city, will the assessment be affected by the fact that utilities are provided by another entity? Do you know?
Well, the utilities will be provided by a private entity. So whether that affects the valuation of the property for tax purposes, I don't know. Generally, we tend to think that parcels that are served by municipal water and sewer services have a more stable source of those services, and so it's generally my thought that that enhances the value of the property, but you'd be better to ask a Realtor whether that's true or not.
Okay.
Because it may just demonstrate my prejudice and bias.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Real quick, I'm sorry, Counselor, Mr. Campbell would like to make a quick comment.
Sorry, just for clarification. So while the city would be collecting taxes, there is a term here to tax share for one and a half mills with the township for, I believe, is it 15?
Yes.
15 years?
Okay.
So while the city would collect the full amount, then we would return a mill and a half per parcel?
Right.
I thought I'd read that. Is that the normal taxation from the township to parcels within the township? Do you know?
I was having a weak -- certainly, I do not have that answer.
Okay. Sure. I think that's probably pretty close to their normal tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. CO. Mr. Campbell?
I have a few questions. So thank you, Mr. Smith, for your explanations. I guess my first question is, I have a number of mentors in city government, and I talk to them about agreements such as this. Regarding the River Ridge sewer and utilities, have we done any kind of research into how stable that system is? And are we obligated to look into, you know, I guess the danger is that communities with that kind of private arrangement don't always invest what they need to, leading to early failure?
Yeah. We, under this agreement, we have no obligation to do that. In fact, we expressly disclaim any duty to verify that those utilities are suitable for anything. My understanding is the developer has investigated that.
Okay.
And that although at one time, we had heard some concerns that those utilities might not be the best, our current understanding, based on conversations with the developer, is that some improvements have been made, and those utilities now are in fairly good shape. We would probably do some investigation before entering into this agreement, and I'm assuming before you'd want to formally consider it, you would want to have us do some verification, have some verification communications with the DEQ.
Ms. Mitchell, if I may, real quick. The developer and some of his associates are here this evening. When we exhaust this second round of questioning, I will yield the floor, and perhaps some of the issues that you're bringing up, and I'm assuming that other council members will bring up, can be addressed by Howard and some members of his team.
Thank you. So along those lines, is there a state regulation that says if a private sewer system fails, the adjacent city has to take that development on?
Well, that isn't true if the property lies outside the city limits. So in this case, because the property's currently outside the city limits, we would have no obligation there.
Okay.
We have done the best we can in this agreement to say we won't have that obligation going forward, and we intend to communicate that to the DEQ upfront before they give any permits to this development, so they know that we're never going to undertake any obligation to serve that with municipal water or sewer, or to take over that system.
So I understand that is the snapshot now, once this agreement is in effect, and, you know, once we reach 2033, if that private system fails during those, what is our liability?
Well, again, the agreement says we have none.
We have.
And we're going to communicate to the DEQ and make sure the DEQ understands that.
Right. So I guess my concern is that would state law overrule anything that our municipality?
State law can always change, and our legislators tend to think they're smarter than we are. So that's always a possibility.
So I beg your pardon, I was not discussing a change in state law? What I was asking?
I don't think we have an obligation now, if the property comes into the city, and we're going to verify that with the DEQ.
Okay. And then these members are going to be voting, these new households are going to be voting. And I just am aware of that, additional resources needed for voting sites for our What are my other notes? I think the utilities and the water and sewer were my biggest concern.
Right. You have concerns over that?
Concerns over those.
Yeah.
Because it deviates from current city practice.
I see. Thanks.
Mr. Campbell?
Just a few questions. First, who actually authorized this agreement to proceed the way it did? Because council didn't. And I'd like to know how that came about and how many hours have been spent on this agreement? Because are we paying for all of this at this point?
Well, what I would say is we were approached by Celine Ventures, the developer, with a draft 425 agreement and reviewing it with Mr. Smith's office and city staff, myself and city engineer, DPW wastewater treatment plant folks. So to look at that, to work that out, the work that's been done has been under the retainer. But at a certain...
We've met a couple of times with them. I think the first time for 45 minutes or so and another time probably for half an hour or so to flesh out some things. I provided them some samples of some other 425 agreements that I've done. Their attorney came up with the initial draft. I made some edits on that draft. Township attorney made some edits on that draft. And I think very soon after that, we ended up with this current draft. So there hasn't been a lot of time spent and all of it is under the retainer.
Okay. One of my questions being that if this is a policy matter, it probably should have come before council, before it proceeded further into almost an agreement at this point. We have a document that's basically written for us to now consider, and we may not have even wanted to go forward on that type of policy because this is looking like we've already attempted to commit to something. And I'm concerned because we've had concerns or expressed to me from Celine Township public officials, and I'm not sure how much communication they have had back and forth. But when I read this document, there's a lot of effort already been put into it before we've even really decided as how we want to operate as a city and a community.
We initially, in a draft, had said that, you know, we had talked about various remedies. We had talked about if the River Ridge utilities failed, it would go back to the township. We tried to develop a number of different scenarios, and this is what we were able to do. You know, I think our approach on this is similar to what we've used on other economic development projects where we come to you with some, something that's formulated that you can wrap your head around and say yes or no or form some policy on, recognizing in this case that it's clearly a departure from past experiences where we've required connections to city water and sewer service.
And from my perspective, I think if we would have had that discussion before a whole document was done, it would have been more beneficial to us and to the developer. So my next question regarding a state potential override. And as we agree, I'm concerned because Moreville ran into a problem where they had an issue with their septic fields and so forth, and they were forced to have to come up with a solution. And I'm not exactly sure exactly how that all played out, but there is that concern that the state can come in and condemn and force anything on us, and we know that. That's not something that the DEQ, because we know every legislature can change their rules and we know that every aspect can be adjusted because Flint is a great example. So my concern from that perspective is I think we're kind of being naive if we don't make the assumption that the state cannot and will not make a change if they have to. So the other question, when we talked about the $5.1 million, is that just servicing this property or does that $5 million include the expanded type of pipe and so forth that would be needed to service any future expansion?
The, let me look at my notes. $3.6 million was needed to serve just this property with water and sewer. And again, those are rough numbers based on some assumptions. And then the $5.1 was the total, including not only that $3.6, but 22% of the $7.9. So the $5.1 is the $3.6 plus the expansion number.
So some of this cost could be recovered from additional parcels that were part of the study if that was to be expanded in the future? Because I'm trying to understand what the expansion represents because if we're saying...
Oh, it's only 22% of the expansion, which is basically the number of residential equivalent units we expect here versus what we would expect in the other connection. Because the expansion's going to cost $7.9 million of the water and sewer systems.
Right.
Is our best current estimate.
Because part of the thing is that if you did the expansion, and yes, they could recover the costs on any further expansion, but it raises a question for us that by doing this, it prevents us, if they're moving to a privatized water and sewer, it starts raising the issue of how are we going to expand in terms of the other pieces of property that would be associated with it? And I'm not so sure that's a good approach.
Yeah. Part of the difficulty here and the reason it costs the $3.6 million is because there aren't any intervening properties. There isn't any other property that would likely connect to the improvements we have to make to serve this property. And that's why from an engineering standpoint, it's so costly. Oftentimes, when you run water and sewer lines, you'll have people along the way in the gap between the development and the current terminus of the system, and they would be connecting. In this case, we haven't got any of that.
The other question regarding the privatization of whatever, and I know that's not our responsibility of whatever, but part of my concern is that this property being seen as being part of the city, that the expectation would be that service, everything would be coming from the city. We'd have that continued issue that we have now is that we have people in the township that believe the city needs to service the township.
I understand.
And when you look at this from a perspective, not only do you have the concern about service and repair, but the potential bankruptcy if the private organization doesn't want to work itself out. So how would we put in here in terms of, I guess, those concerns? Because I'd hate to be the city where we own property, provide most of the services, and then all of a sudden, this private entity declares bankruptcy or can't operate, and then they're going to look at us being the city, why are you not solving my problem? Because I pay you taxes. So that's a big flag, and I don't know how that is addressed in this agreement, especially once the developer's done. They walk away from it, there it is. And so whatever happens in the future...
Well, I don't, you can ask the developer how they plan to set that up, whether it's a homeowners association or these are going to be site condos and we'd be condominium association, whether they're setting it up as a separate utility. It's not uncommon to have privately owned utilities in the state. I've had clients that run privately owned utilities, water systems in particular, but there are some, a number of privately owned sewer systems too. So I'm not, I'm not suggesting that's good or bad, and I certainly understand that if something were to fail, it's easy to come to a meeting here and 120-some households sitting in the audience attempting to put pressure on this council. That's certainly something that would likely occur.
Right. And then filing lawsuits and then getting involved with all kinds of additional costs potentially that we get stuck with. The other question I had was regards to, well, the mill. We have 1.5 on here. The Huntington Woods one, wasn't that 0.5 mill when we brought that annexation in?
It never had a finite...
And it never had a...
Which I think is...
But it was supposed to, I thought, after all the parcels are sold within that phase? And we've never really clarified that.
Well, there's a minimum amount of money to be collected and shared.
And I was just curious how we'd use that, but I thought it was 0.5 mill on that one.
It would be my opinion, this is a very emphatic opinion, that the terms of compensation for Huntington Woods is not ideal public policy. And if and when we engage in 425 agreements with our neighbors in the future, that is not a model of precedent I would be using.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I just wanted to know, based on the amount of compensation that we got on, or giving back on that based on what we're giving here, so we're almost a mill, one more mill than what we had promised on that one, I believe. So maybe a half mill. And the last thing was just being that I was around when the plant was, when that manufactured home community was built, and there were major concerns in terms of the reliability of that system, the potential that it could affect our city and so forth. So when I look at this agreement right now, my only last question would be is, when you mentioned all the different departments and involving, you know, everyone approving this and everything, what do we have as a recourse to say if we don't want this to go forward? If we say we don't want to do this agreement, yet they're going to go, oh, the Celine Township do all that as a private entity in water and sewer, would we have any grounds to object to that because we're so close to it?
Not unless we could show that there's some real danger of that. Contamination of groundwater or surface water or something else, probably not.
Thank you.
Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. I have a few questions. Let's see, on page two, subsection little F, it says majority vote. I think there needs to be some sort of clarification because it indicates it just needs a majority vote. It doesn't say by the entities separately.
Well, it talks about the city council and township board have each decided by a majority vote of the members elected and serving on each body.
But it just seems like it should say majority vote of each body.
It does say that. But it requires a majority vote of all of the members, not just those present for the quarrel.
Right.
So you would need a majority of your seven, and I don't know how many the township board has, but if they have five or seven, it would need a majority of those.
Okay. It just, it seemed a little confusing when I was reading it that it wasn't just a majority of the entire group, both groups.
Okay.
And then on page three, right towards the bottom, it would be under subsection D, number two. It refers to Austin Commons. I think that's supposed to be Austin Commons two, because Austin Commons is the property that sits on the corner of Austin Road that's within the city already. Austin Commons two would be the one that's across the street, correct?
Double check that. This is...
I'm just saying, I just...
That's fine. I made a note, we'll double check.
Yep, that's fine. And then I just wanted, and I know this has been touched upon, about the amount of water that's currently available through River Ridge. I mean, is that sufficient? I know they're talking about having an additional water from River Ridge. I mean, is that a backup system or, I mean, are they anticipating that they're not going to have enough water to begin with?
We can ask the developer that for a moment.
Okay.
That's probably the better way to get that information.
Okay. I had the same questions regarding whether the state can force us to do anything. And then just for clarification, Mr. Campbell, when you talked about, when we were just discussing the 1.5 mills, you mentioned a minimum amount. Is there a minimum amount that we have to return to the township each year? Is that what you're implying? And that 1.5 mills would sort of encompass that dollar amount?
Sorry, I'm trying to, minimum amount. I mean, what I would say is, as it's drafted currently, we would, the city would be sharing one and a half mills of the 16.28 that would be collected. That's the current city tax rate, right?
I think Councilmember Dillon, you're, Todd was referring to the other agreement that we have that requires payment of a certain minimum amount total.
Right.
That's not what this agreement provides. This agreement's just a sharing of mills.
Okay. Right.
So I think, I think his reference to what was done in the other agreement may have caused some confusion.
Okay. So that's a separate, okay.
Yes. Sorry, I was trying to...
That's okay.
But so, yeah, there was a, there's a minimum, I believe it's a specific dollar amount in the current 425 with Celine Township for the Huntington Woods Phase One.
But that's different than this agreement.
Yes.
Okay. And then on the map, what exactly are we referring to right now? I mean, this is a huge parcel. There's the portion that says multifamily, that's just a big empty space right now. I mean, is that a future development? Is that what that's indicating?
Again, that would be a question for Howard to address when we exhaust questions in the day.
The maps are illustrative of what the developer is proposing to do.
Right.
And they can explain in details what that proposal is. It's all vacant property right now.
Right. Okay. And then my last question is, wouldn't it, I don't understand why this isn't an agreement between Celine Township and River Ridge? And if they want to bring their developer in, do they have their own separate agreement as to what's going on or is it all part of this agreement?
There will likely be an agreement between River Ridge and this developer.
Right.
To address the use of those utilities.
Right. Because I guess I'm confused as to why you had mentioned that they, that we are naming them in our agreement. Is that normal practice?
It's quite common in 425 agreements to also name the developer because oftentimes we want the developer to be signing off on the terms and conditions under which the property transfer is going to occur.
Okay.
Okay. So we want them, for example, to know that we're not binding ourselves by this agreement to any particular outcome of the zoning. I'm not saying what the planning commission has to do, the decisions our zoning administrator has to make, we're not committing to anything. Same thing, we want them to realize what we aren't committing to and what we are committing to with respect to water and sewer and so forth. We want the developer to understand all of that.
Okay. Thank you. And my last question is that it's a little confusing because we have never seen any type of information for this project as to what their plan is. All of a sudden, I just sort of got this map, and I have no idea what their phases are, what their timeframe is. So I sort of feel like we're jumping ahead and as to what are the advantages, you know, is this a 15-year project and we're looking at a 15-year contract to where we really don't have a benefit from it on the front side?
Yeah. That's one of the reasons why the developer is here, to address some of those questions and concerns that people have. And I concede, as I mentioned in my opening statement, this is a multi-dimensional, complex issue, and it's difficult to get your hands around it initially, which is also the reason why we're not developing consensus or taking any vote this evening, why we want to be very thoughtful and give council members ample time to ask questions and raise concerns.
I appreciate that, Mayor. My question is, though, this has been on the table for a long time, and I feel like all of a sudden, it's jumping to us, and we haven't been part of the process to even think of whether we wanted to go down this road as a city. So I just feel like we've got this agreement, and I just feel like there's a lot of holes of information for us. So I am hoping that the developer will be able to answer some of those, but it would have been nice to have a little bit more detail prior to getting to this stage.
And what would be helpful then is if maybe in the form of an email, you could send me what information was deficient that you would like to see in a future discussion. That would be beneficial.
That would be fine. Thank you.
Ms. McClellan?
Yeah, a lot of my questions have already been answered. I do have a question about the 15 years. So it's basically up for renewal then in 15 years or...
Terminates at the end.
It terminates in 15. So then...
Except the obligation, except the requirements with respect to the water and sewer system continue indefinitely.
Okay. So it's not a situation where Celine Township says, okay, great, they got their development, now we want it back?
No.
Okay.
It stays in the city's jurisdiction.
Okay. That was, that was one of my questions. And then section, on page four, section, section four, the last part there, how is that provision enforced? I mean, I guess maybe we've talked a little bit about that, but like, say they don't maintain their system, said, you know, stuff goes bad, how are we as a city enforcing their meeting standards to the DEQ and stuff? Does that make sense?
We will ask to see copies of that correspondence. We will ask to see copies of that correspondence and so forth.
Going forward, though, in the future, like, you know, let's say, 10 years from now, something's gone. Again, I think we kind of addressed this a little bit, but something goes bad, and, you know, they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. Are we as a city responsible for making sure that's enforced?
Not the way this agreement is set up. We're not responsible for that. That'll be subject to the Homeowners Association, Condominium Association, whatever they've got, and they can fill you in on how that's going to work.
Okay. And then, in regards to, you know, the costs, do we have a rough estimate what the benefit is to the city versus what the cost? I mean, we have the cost as 7.9 million or give or take. Do we have any benefit?
We don't have any cost with this agreement. Our benefit will be the taxes generated by that development, by the land coming in the city, the taxes on the land, and then the taxes on the development. So, however many homes there are, you could multiply that by, just pick a number, 200,000, divide it in half by 100,000, figure the taxes on that. Same thing with the commercial development and multifamily development. You can figure the value of that, divide it by two, and then figure out what the city taxes would be on it.
We could get that information.
We could get that.
I mean, there would be costs, right? We have streets to maintain and police and all that, so it's not...
There are costs as well as a benefit. And of course, the benefit, we're not going to be giving you exactly...
Right, but a rough estimate, I think, would be helpful. So, I think that's it for me now. Thank you.
So, most of my questions have been asked in some form. I want to just go back to the water and sewer system question again and say, this was, even though I was not one of the persons that Ms. Mitchell consulted with about this, I am also very concerned about that issue, and I understand there are no guarantees, but I would want us, if we did this, I would want us to be very, very confident that the city is not going to, down the road, end up with this problem to solve. And related, so, on water and sewer, this is touched on just a little bit, but I would like to hear from the developer what, how the maintenance and servicing of the water and sewer lines within this development would be handled and regulated. Because presumably, once it's completed, the developer is not going to be there anymore to do the maintenance and take care of things. So, who's going to do that and how, is that going to be regulated, is a big question in my mind. Another infrastructure question has to do with roads, ownership of the roads. I know that there are some developments within the city limits, where Mr. Seau lives, for example, where the Homeowners Association is also responsible for maintenance of the roads? No, you're not? Not any longer? Used to be? So, are these, would these roads come to the ownership of the city, and would the city then be responsible for that infrastructure? That's a concern just in our general atmosphere right now of lack of funding for infrastructure maintenance and improvements statewide. So, that's a general concern I have. And the last thing, I guess, the last thing I would say is, according to the document, the Celine Township has already approved a planned unit development plan for this parcel. So, presumably, it could go forward under the Celine Township, Township Rules and Master Plan. What's the advantage to Celine Township and to the developers of coming into the city? That's it. Thanks.
Howard, I think that would be an appropriate time for you to...
Do you want me up there?
I would love for you to join us up at the podium, and if you want to bring any of your associates to the podium. Howard, make sure the green light is on at the base of that microphone and that you do speak into it because we are requiring this.
Okay.
If you want to introduce yourself and your associates and then begin to address some of the questions and concerns that were raised by my colleagues, we would appreciate that.
Fabulous. How are we doing time-wise? Are we...
I'd like to wrap this particular discussion up in the next 15 minutes or so so we can transition to a draft policy on the appropriate use of electronic devices in communication. But like I said, we're going to plan to revisit this at our next meeting, which would be on August the 8th. We'd be delighted if your schedule permitted or allowed you to join us.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Seth, excuse me, whatever that first Monday is.
My name is Howard Fingerroot, and I'm the managing partner of Pinnacle Homes. Pinnacle Homes owns the Celine Ventures, and I appreciate the opportunity. And I just kind of, I want to introduce myself and who we are, Pinnacle Homes, and then I want to turn it over to my colleagues. I have Alan Green from Dykema, who's our attorney. He can talk about some of the technical aspects of the 425. And I also brought Bill Anderson from Atwell Group. He's our engineer, also some of the technical questions, because a lot of the questions are both insightful and technical, and I'd rather have the experts talk about it rather than me giving broad strokes. You know, oftentimes, I say something to my wife, and she says, "Well, you said this." And I say, "Well, I didn't exactly say that." So, I don't want to, I don't want to get in trouble, so I just want to leave it to the experts to answer your questions. But just by way of introduction, Pinnacle Homes, we're one of the largest home builders in southeast Michigan. We build 200, 250 houses a year in Washtenaw, Oakland, Macomb, and Wayne Counties. I've been developing real estate and building homes in southeast Michigan for about 25 years, and I've developed over 12,000 home sites. And over the course of the last handful of years, the Home Builders Association of Southeast Michigan has awarded us Builder of the Year. We've been awarded Developer of the Year a few years ago, and most recently, the state of Michigan has gave us the designation as a Pure Michigan Builder. So, all the Pure Michigan ads and everything you hear about, we're the only builder in Michigan that has this designation, so we can use this in our advertising and everything else. And I believe the state granted this because of our employment base in the state of Michigan, we're based in the state of Michigan, and the environmental sensitivity that we do when we develop our sites and build our homes. So, that's who we are, Pinnacle Homes. And now, I want to turn it over to Alan Green because he can really kind of answer a lot of the questions and give a history and background. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Can you just go ahead? You can hear me. It's a little bit of deja vu. All your questions are really great questions, and we've spent a lot of time talking about those same issues with the township. A little bit of history, this is somewhat unique because the township and the city actually looked forward years ago. Your master plan, and apparently tonight, you're going to consider your new master plan, your master plan and the township's master plan envisioned the fact that there would be some property abutting or nearby the city that both communities thought would be better developed within the city. So, your master plans are fairly consistent with each other. You have a master plan that actually includes our property and says what the property should be developed as, and the township does. We initially went into the township, because we're in the township, and we proposed a PUD development. It's well over two, three years ago now? And so, the questions are, when are you ready to go? We've been ready to go for a long time. So, we started the process with a PUD, was fully consistent with the township's master plan. The township's planner, who I believe is your planner as well, outside planner, recommended it, said it's fully consistent with the plan, it's a good development, and we did receive a preliminary approval for that. Issue of utilities came up. We were always proposing to get our utilities from River Ridge because the township doesn't have any utilities. And I'll talk about that in a second because we had a lot of discussion about that. But the township said to us back two years ago, you know, "Under our plan, we want this property, you're adjacent to the city, and the city's plan and our plan says you should be developed in the city. And you would go, you should go to the city and talk to them and get utilities there, and we're all in favor of you developing the city." So, we did that. We actually approached the city. The city said, you know, "We really need to do studies of our infrastructure. We don't know if our plan has the capacity to serve you." And so, we worked with the city. I think we paid probably in excess of $100,000 to the city's engineers to do these studies that came out. And as a result of those studies, it turned out that it really was economically not feasible to extend the city's services to this property. So, we were essentially going back to the township at that point in time and saying, "Okay, let's just continue our project as we had started it with the approval." And it's interesting, the township supervisor at the last meeting, last been over, probably a while ago, said, "Try one more time. Let's talk about it. Go back to the city." Because you've got to understand, you asked what the benefit to us was. Doing it this way, we're really just doing it because this is what the communities want and makes sense, and it makes sense that the city wants to expand because for us, it's increasing our tax base enormously. And normally, a developer would do that in order to get utility service. That's usually a big thing. But here, we're not going to get that, and we still have to pay a fairly substantial amount of money to get it from River Ridge. I'll talk about that in a moment because those are all great questions in that regard. So, we actually had some discussions and said, you know, Act 425 does not require the city to provide us with utilities. You can't do it now. If the parties are all willing, we can do an Act 425 agreement. We come in for the city for all purposes, as if we were next to the city, and we would still get our utilities from River Ridge. The agreement provides, for example, that we have to build all the infrastructure to city standards. So, if in the future, say, something changed and utilities became available, or there was a way to do it, it could connect to our system, and everything would be built to city standards. So, that's how this whole thing came about. I mean, we really have some detailed plans, and obviously, your master plan is similar to the township, so the plans would be close. There would be differences. For example, you just mentioned roads. For example, our project was designed for private roads. The association was going to handle the roads. We had an understanding that the city was going to require public roads, so we were going to redesign it for public roads, which would change a little bit the design, but we could do either. We would do whatever you wanted. It doesn't, that would be part of the development process, that we would go forward and work with the city. Here's, I'll explain briefly about the utilities. Clearly, a huge issue for most of you. It was a huge issue for the township. We had several meetings where we discussed utilities. Here's the issue in Michigan, as your attorney just said. Neither community has responsibility for a private system unless you agree or assume that responsibility. Because of that, the regulations, MDEQ regulations, are pretty stringent in that regard. This system, River Ridge system, is built to the same public design standards as your system is built. They're no different. Because it's privately owned versus publicly owned, the standards are the same, the regulatory requirements are the same. But because it's privately owned, and in a case where the municipality is not, quote, "standing behind it," the MDEQ has some very stringent bonding and escrow requirements. You have to literally put up enough money over time to replace the entire system. They want money in place so that if there's a failure, it's there and available to take care of that. And it's operated by a, you know, it's not the private developer has to operate the system by hiring an experienced operator, the same kind of operator that would operate a city system. We are, we have a draft. It's a fairly elaborate, which we would show you. It's almost like a complete sewer and water agreement with River Ridge. It sets forth all the obligations of the parties to construct the system, to operate, to maintain it, to get all MDEQ approvals. We will have a condominium association. It's going to be a site condominium, single-family home sites and the multiple home sites. The condominium association will have obligations in terms of its assessments to pay whatever monthly charges you need to pay for both capital improvements and the use of the system. We can provide all that to you. I'm obviously not going to be able to, you know, go through all this for you in such a short period of time, but we actually prepared a memo for the township some time ago to explain why the township doesn't have any responsibility over the system. We could provide that same memo to you, which would allow you then to ask questions the next time around. Every question that you've asked was the same, were the same questions that the township asked.
I apologize for interrupting, but if you could get those documents to our...
Yeah.
No, no, you continue talking. But if you could get those documents that you just referenced to our city manager for distribution, that would be very helpful.
Well, I'll do that right away. So, I'll leave it to that for further questions after you look at that. But clearly, the intent is you would never have any responsibility for the system. The MDEQ has fairly elaborate processes in place in making sure that that happens. And that actually came about some years ago. There was some lawsuit, it's called Lake Isabella, where the MDEQ used to go to communities for private systems and say, "You've got to sign up and say that you're responsible for it." It turned out that the Court of Appeals said, "You can't do that. That's wrong. That's not, you have no jurisdiction to do that." So, after that case, the MDEQ amended its own regulations to make them very stringent in terms of if they're going to approve the permits for private systems and the operating requirements for that, that they have very elaborate financial requirements. So, hopefully, we'll get you to a comfort level that this will all work out. Ideally, we would have loved to have just come into the city and obtained the public utilities, but it really, I think everybody agreed, based upon the numbers, that it was just too excessive. It wasn't even close. Do you want to say some?
Bill, will you spend three minutes on that?
Make sure speaking into the mic there, Bill.
Bill Anderson with Atwell. Pleasure to be here and see everybody. Yeah, I also have a copy of basically the plan we had here and took to the township. Obviously, there'll be some changes, and again, there's, it's consistent with your master plan. It's got a single-family and attached component, and it's got a little retail across the frontage. As far as the water and wastewater treatment systems, both those systems will have to be, are being looked at for expansion on River Ridge. It will be permitted through the DEQ, and there's a public notice component, and you guys will be aware of those. And all those designs will be, for this, onsite would be consistent with the city, and also, the treatment for the water treatment and systems at River Ridge and the wastewater treatment system for River Ridge would be permitted through the state. And as Alan had indicated, the state will be that permitting agency for that. So, that work is underway, and you guys will certainly be apprised of any of those documents.
Bill, do you want to spend maybe just two minutes talking a little bit about what you've proposed thus far? Obviously, you haven't worked, gone through the zoning and planning process, but number of units?
Yep.
I think there's some single-family, some multifamily, some commercial.
Yeah, roughly, there's a, we have a primary entrance for the residential off of Austin Road. You come in, and we have an attached product that's still in flux a little bit. About 20 acres, probably about six units an acre. Then, you're spinning off, and this is all single-family. That's a 70-foot wide unit, consistent with your R1B zoning that we kind of, that's a copy of an attachment that's in the agreement here today. And then, there's some neighborhood retail that'll come along at some point along Michigan Ave. Just order of context, this is your Torwood Development up here. This is your Austin Commons. So, we'll have an attached product here, the single-family that stretches out to the rear, and again, some commercial along Michigan Avenue. The retail's about 20 acres. The residential's about 76 acres. The density for the single-family is about two units an acre. Again, in the urban services district, you guys talked about three to five units an acre in here, and something one to three across there. So, for our property, the density's pretty consistent with what your joint township and city development plan was. And again, this plan was looked at and reviewed by Doug LeWan through the lens of the township, and we have to start over and go through with you folks, but generally, the layout and the uses would be consistent in these areas. So... Does that make sense?
Thank you. I think we're going to have to leave it there tonight. This is, of course, as I mentioned earlier, an ongoing discussion. Howard, you and your associates will be able to join us at our first meeting in August. I'll have the clerk confirm the details for you. It will be a discussion item towards the end of the agenda, but if you want to forward to our city manager the documents that your attorney referenced and any other pertinent information that you think would be helpful to this group, we would appreciate that, but we look forward to seeing you in a few weeks and continuing our dialogue. Okay? Quickly, please.
Yes, I just have a quick question. Your dotted lines...
Your dotted lines, so where you have multifamily, do you not currently have that property? I'm not sure, because then you have the tail off of the.
All the colored area, 117 acres, is owned by Sillings Ventures.
Okay.
These are just designated to different uses.
Okay.
This was kind of a single-family, traditional home, this is more of an attached product, similar with Austin Commons, and this green area along Michigan Ave was more of a retail.
Right.
All of this is 117 acres, a part of the Sillings.
So, on your second map?
Sure, sure.
The dotted line that's going up right before the tail?
This was kind of our bottom phase in.
Okay.
First phase of residential, the retail will come last. We're looking at probably coming out of the gate with a single-family residential, and then probably coming into a multifamily, so two or three phases of single families.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Gentlemen, thank you. Appreciate your attendance this evening. We are going to transition now, but I believe Mr. Smith is going to begin this discussion as well, on an electronics policy. And you should have had, you should have received a draft in your packet that was delivered to your door on Thursday evening.
So, I can go through this quickly. This was an attempt to put together an all-encompassing policy regarding electronic devices. It would apply to all public servants, elected and appointed officers, employees, boards, commissions, committee members, and volunteers, when they're performing city duties, when they're acting on the city's behalf, when they're representing the city, or, and it also would apply to all city-owned electronic devices. And an electronic device is basically defined as any kind of electronic device. See, you see, the purpose is to provide integrity, make sure that only appropriate persons are engaged in some communications, to provide for proper retention of communications, and to ensure compliance with the law. We have indicated in paragraph Roman numeral two, or part Roman numeral two, the general policy is that all city devices and any communications or records on them belong to the city. This is true even of personal uses of city devices, so anybody that's using a city device for a personal communication, that personal communication still belongs to the city. City communications on personal devices are public records, so we're generally trying to discourage the use of personal devices for city-related communications. It prohibits the use of city devices by unauthorized persons, including family members, and prohibits sharing of passwords. Appropriate use is kind of a common sense list, appropriate use is for city work, it must comply with the law, it must survive a sunshine test, and that is, if it were printed on the front page of the free press, would you be embarrassed? It has to be ethical, and personal use is limited and could be further restricted. Most of the prohibited uses are also common sense. Can't use a city device or any city equipment for campaigning and political activities. You can't have intellectual property law violations. You should stay out of email chains with offensive jokes and stories and so forth. No downloading of illegal content such as child pornography. No hacking on any city devices of anybody else's system. No unauthorized communications. Only, the city administrator needs to have access to it all, so you can't add your own encryption and that kind of thing to city devices, only those things that are approved by the system administrator. No anonymous messages or circuitous routing to come up with anonymity. No personal business activities or working for other employers. You have to comply with the Law Enforcement Information Network and other system requirements where we tap into data systems. You can't access information that's not within your job description or engage in other unauthorized use. So, you know, somebody from the treasurer's office couldn't use the lean system because they're not authorized to do it. No texting or emailing from the dais, and we explained before why you shouldn't be doing that, or why planning commissioners or zoning board of appeals members shouldn't be doing that. If you're on the dais and you access the internet with some information, you need to share that with everybody else, so everybody has the same basis for making a decision. Can't allow others to use city resources, no invasion of privacy, you can't do anything to intentionally harm the city system, you can't download programs without the system administrator's approval, and then limiting distractions and so forth. There may be tax consequences if you use a city system for personal use. If you're using a city cellphone for personal use, theoretically, the IRS could claim that there are tax consequences of that, like using a city car for personal use. And then, we've got limitations on how those devices can be used while driving to minimize distracted driving. And, you know, we talk about here, if you've got, if you've had a breach of your system, you need to notify us of that. There's a county administrator that Todd and I both know, somebody hacked into his system, planted pornography on it, he immediately reported it, and that was the thing to do, right? As soon as he discovered it, he reported it to the system administrator, and it was addressed. And use is a privilege, not a right. And city authorization is needed for social media messaging on behalf of the city. So, it's a pretty comprehensive policy. We tried to write things in a pretty common sense sort of way, in a pretty plain English kind of way, but it's only a draft, and we welcome any comments, questions, concerns, suggested changes, and so forth.
While it is quite comprehensive and detailed, Mr. Smith, at the same time, you achieved a balance of being straightforward and succinct, and so I think this is, I think this is excellent work. Mr. Har, any questions or recommendations?
Yeah, a couple of questions. A question. So, this is about social media, on page five, part 3B1. So, some of us use social media to put questions out to the public that we are about to consider, or topics that are going to come up, and ask people what their opinions are. Is that prohibited under this, or covered under this?
It is, it is if you're acting in a quasi-judicial capacity. You, for the most part, are not. You're acting in a legislative capacity, and getting public input on legislation is appropriate. When we're making a decision under the zoning ordinance, the construction codes, or something else, those are quasi-judicial decisions, and impartiality, and ex parte communications, and so forth, you have to address.
Okay, so, for us, general, soliciting comments and opinions on things that might be coming up for us to discuss is perfectly appropriate.
There may be particular instances where you're not doing that. If you're having a hearing on a personnel matter, for example, that would be a situation where you're acting in a quasi-judicial capacity.
And, so, this is a records retention question, I guess. So, in my city email, I routinely delete a lot of stuff, is that a wrong thing to do?
As long as they're sitting on the city server, that's okay.
Okay. I don't know.
As long as we have it, but, and I think they are, so your deletion out of your inbox doesn't delete them off the system, we could still recover those.
Okay, thank you. That's it. I think she had the same questions that I did, so.
Easy enough.
Okay, I've got a few questions.
Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was inappropriate.
It seems like this is sort of an all-encompassing agreement, that it's city staff, elected officials, and things like that. Do we all fall under the same umbrella? Because it seems a little different, and I know you just clarified for Mr. Har, and I guess that was some of, there's a couple of spots in here where it doesn't seem like for a staff employee to make comments, but for someone that's on the planning commission or something, it seems different. So, I just feel like there may need to be some sort of clarification. I don't know, I just, and I'll go through.
If you could point out where those are, we'll be happy to consider them.
Okay.
And you can do it either tonight or in an email.
Absolutely.
I'll be happy to follow up.
I guess my biggest issue is the whole concept of city-issued devices, and who gets those? Because the agreement goes back and forth between, "Well, we don't want you to use personal devices." Well, then, if that's the case, then everybody should have a city-issued device. But then, you have a cost factor and that sort of thing. So, why would you want to separate it out? Wouldn't it just be easier to have everybody using a personal device?
No, because if you use, if you use a personal device, and there's a lawsuit, somebody can take your personal device and do an examination of that personal device, including all your personal emails and personal business on that device.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, you really don't want to mingle the two.
Okay, but we are, then, because we've got some people doing it, some people not, and I guess I'm just.
And I'm advocating that you don't do that. Todd and I went back and forth on this a little bit, because we have some budgetary constraints, you know? We can't give every city employee a city-issued cellphone and a city-issued tablet and so forth. It's just not feasible to do that within our budget. So, we've tried to strike the balance as best we can. If you think the balance is in the wrong place, and the line ought to be someplace else, that's fine, we can make adjustments, this is a draft.
Okay. And then, there was the section, it's like 1516, where it talks about members during public meetings not having communications, not doing things. And I know we've discussed that before, but that also seems like there should be some sort of reference to, so long as it's not pertaining to the issue at hand.
You can't.
You can't put an exception to it?
You don't want any communications from the dais, because the difficulty is, nobody knows what's happening there, and you're going to get called on Open Meetings Act issues if you do that.
Because I thought that was the whole reason behind having the tablets at the dais, was that we would be able to look at, like, minutes on demand, that sort of thing, which is obviously using the internet.
That's fine, as long as you share what, share that information with everybody else, and tell everybody else on the dais what you're looking at.
Okay.
Because, again, we want all council members, all board members, commissioners, and so forth, to have the same information, and be basing their information, their decisions. We want the record to be complete.
Right.
And so, we need to understand what everybody's looking at and considering to have a complete record.
Okay. So, going back to the issuing of devices, like cellphones, we're all, we're at the same time telling them they can use it for personal use. So, we're opening that back up on the other side. It's the same as using a personal device for business, if you're using a business device for personal.
But I've also indicated that, this policy indicates that all communications on a city-owned device, even personal communications, belong to the city.
Well, yeah, it would be either way, so I don't see.
But I don't think you want all your personal communications on your personal device to belong to the city.
But why wouldn't we just have a policy of city-owned devices could only be used for city business?
That's up to you. We've, again, Todd and I went back and forth on that a little bit, and we tried to draw a reasonable line, and say, if somebody's at their desk, and it's Christmas time, and they're trying to order something from Amazon, quit. Can they do that on a personal device during, or on a city device during lunch hour? And I think the decision was that that's kind of what we've been doing, and the policy should at least recognize what is. If you want to change that policy, that's up to you.
Okay. Because then it comes into, you've got that arbitrary excessive use, and what exactly does excessive mean? It's mentioned here several times in different instances, and, I mean, do we have, is it a percentage, is it, you know, is it a, is it a?
Well, I would say excessive use is if it's slowing down the city system, because you're downloading a lot of materials all day, and it's creating a blockage to the city system, and so we can't do city business. If you're doing it outside of your break times and lunch hours, that's excessive use. If it's interfering with your work, that's excessive use. You know, if you're getting emails all day from your significant other and responding to those, that's probably excessive use. You know, we reserve the right to curtail or further restrict use, and it's like a lot of things, you know?
Right.
It was the same thing with the telephone.
Okay, just, and I'll just, I know we need to move on, so just really quickly, the last thing I'll ask is in Roman numeral three, subsection A, says, "From time to time, the mayor may communicate on behalf of the city council, independent of the city manager." Is the mayor allowed to speak on behalf of council?
If you delegate, indicate that that's his, that you've decided that he's going to do that, and oftentimes, you do ask the mayor to make those communications.
I would just, I actually get her point, I would strike that. I have no problem striking that.
Okay.
Because it really should be, if the mayor is speaking in an official capacity on behalf of the city, that should really be a decision, a policy decision made by a majority of council members.
Correct.
So, I would remove that.
Okay. So, I know in the interest of time, I will stop. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Girbaugh, quickly.
Yeah, just real quick, the only thing I had a concern on was, the other items have been mentioned. Mine was, I'd really like to understand the public safety and peace officers shall follow police department. I have a concern when we set up separate rules for police officers than what's going on. And I understand it's because of investigations and so forth.
Well, I think that in this case, we're talking about electronic devices, so they all have the laptop computers in their car, they're also communicating on radios, and they're also communicating on issued cellphones, so at any given point in time, they may be driving and doing a lot of those kinds of things, different than the policy we've set out for others, so.
And that's where I'm actually concerned, because I've had some complaints made for that, and the issue of private use versus government use is where that would throw out, and I think that policy, we just talked about, using it for non-business needs.
I think the only exception in there for police officers, and maybe I'm wrong, and maybe there's something I'm not thinking of right now, but I think it's basically, for using the electronic devices while driving, we have different rules for police officers, not for personal use, but while driving.
And that's why I want to clarify that, while driving, you can't be using it for personal use, that would be my issue.
Right, I don't think, and if we need to clarify that, I'm happy to do that, that wasn't intended.
And then, the last one was, the city manager, it talks about, if there's issues or concerns about how devices are being used, you bring forth to the city manager? No offense, Todd, but if it's the city manager that someone has a concern about.
Who, and it comes to you guys. City manager's accountable to you.
Okay.
And we can add that to the policy.
That's probably a good addition. Ms. Mitchell, anything real quick? Sorry to cut you short, but we're already.
Right. I will need more time to discuss this issue. I guess my concern is about Roman numeral three, as well as that the communications, the power for the city manager seems overly broad, and I would need some examples of what's okay and what's not under what's written. So, I'll pass with that comment.
Can you, from what I'm hearing, so we've got a few corrections, changes that Mr. Smith is going to make, whatever questions, commentary you have, could you email that to the city manager? And that goes for everybody. What I'd like to do is, I think you're correct, I don't think we're going to be in a position to approve this at our next meeting, but I am going to enumerate it as a discussion item. If we can develop consensus, then it would come back our second meeting in August.
And I think, I think I'll probably be at your next meeting, too, because I think there's an item on the agenda that I'll need to be here to address.
So, you could help us address?
Right.
Any questions you're concerned that may come up between now and then? Mr. Seale?
I'll pass.
You're good? Okay, excellent. So, again, this will appear as the discussion item at the end of our next regular meeting. Is there anything further to be brought up during the city council work meeting? Then the chairman entertained a motion to adjourn at, let's say, 6:37 PM?
Seven thirty-seven.
Seven thirty-seven, excuse me. Moved by Tahar, seconded by Girbaugh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously.